Okay. We were just making up some time here because as advertised, we're going to start approximately 5:15. So we really couldn't start before that in case there was people that wanted to come in at 10. And so we've met the 5:15 mark and we are ready to proceed ahead. So we just came back from revisiting the school property and we'll be talking about that here a little bit further down on the agenda. And so the next thing that we've got here is hearing comments from visitors on agenda items. So is there anyone here that would like to speak to an agenda item? Chuck, we already have you on, so we know that you'll be speaking here soon. So anything else? Okay, I guess we're ready to move forward with our new business then, starting off with a December meeting date or dates.
Okay, December meeting date for our regular meeting will be on the 15th at 6 o'clock in the boardroom. There's no conflict, so that would be our regular time. And I just wanted to give you a heads up looking ahead to January. Our regular meeting would be scheduled during the convention. So I just wanted you to start thinking it will probably be best to schedule it for January 26th, the week after, should we have any business to discuss after the event.
Okay, and we can set that in our December meeting date.
Next month, right.
But you're giving us some forewarning, which is great.
Right.
Okay, all right, so no change, this is the third Wednesday in December, standard time.
Yep.
All right, so I guess nothing to do with that then, so we're good there. We can move on then to B, Consider Mental Health Services with Behavioral Health Clinic of Wausau.
Okay, this one came to you late in the game. What we have been doing is trying to address more additional mental health needs that we're seeing within our students. And in a moment, I'll have Ryan speak to it. Our counselors are doing a wonderful job maintaining and managing their roles and providing additional services. But there's been a lot of additional needs and there are some needs that are just really beyond what the school counseling setting can provide. So we did some investigation to see what was available. And as with anything else right now in the pandemic times, mental health services are very difficult to ascertain. Wait lists are many weeks to sometimes months out with the local providers if you can get in. We did contact CISA 9 because they do have some offerings as well, but they were more expensive. And then Ryan and Carrie came upon this option with the Behavioral Health Clinic of Wausau. And they are a completely online mental health provider. And we met with them on late Thursday afternoon, evening. And we were really quite pleased with some of the services that they could offer to us. With that, Ryan, I'm just going to have you add a little bit, please.
Sure, so in the district's emergency response manual, we have a number of counseling services listed in there. And over the years that I've been in this position, worked with students and families, get that list out so parents could identify which service best fit the needs of a student. And the feedback that I received oftentimes, it took like Superintendent Manny just mentioned, it took four to six weeks minimum for them to obtain those counseling services. Another challenge, the parents would have to leave work, pick the child up from school, go to, you know, oftentimes Ryland or attend the counseling service, and then drop the student off and go back to work. So it was at least a half a day that the parent would be outside, out of work. And then the student would often miss at least half a day of classes. So what this option would benefit, or how this option would benefit the students, it would allow the student to possibly remain at school to receive those counseling services online. And we could look at a quiet place, a quiet room for that student to get the online services. Or that student could receive those services at home outside of the school day. So it would really prevent that barrier of, again, a parent leaving work, picking up the child. It would prevent the child from missing the educational opportunities in the classroom. The nice thing is it would not be a cost to the district. We would not be billed for those services. The behavioral health services would be billed with to the insurance. So that would be taken care of outside of what we would be responsible for.
So we're the conduit?
Yes, correct. So to me, you know, to my knowledge, the services that are, we have listed in our emergency response manual, do not provide the online virtual options, it's all in person. So the online option could be nice, and again, the parent could decide for, you know, each child is different. It might be better for the child to have the in-person counseling. And the parent would still have that option. But this would, this option would provide the students the virtual, the distant counseling services for the reasons that I just explained.
What percentage of our students fall into that category of needing those services?
It really fluctuates. And we have, we do have a number of junior high and high school students that have the long-term, weekly, or two to three times a month services. And then we have students who, you know, there will be a crisis in the family, something will happen, and they'll receive, they'll at least look into services for a short period of time. And, you know, I'm meeting with a large number of students on a weekly basis. But this would be the long-term, more comprehensive approach to the counseling that they need.
Is there follow-up with the students? Let's just say that they're making progress online, but face-to-face connections are going to be needed. Is that an opportunity for them to follow through and go down to Wausau if needed?
Yes, well, through this, that's a good question. I'm not, I don't want to answer through the Behavioral Health Clinic of Wausau that we're specifically talking about.
Right.
But they could, my understanding is they could do the online, they could receive the virtual counseling while they're waiting potentially for that in-person.
Yep.
Yes, and that could be through, you know, right here in Rylander, so the student wouldn't have to drive down to Wausau.
Oh, okay, so there is an option, behavioral health in Rylander also, or through another provider?
While they're waiting the four to six or six to eight week period for the services here in Rylander.
Okay.
This, we were told by Debbie, their spokesperson, that they could receive the services within a week of the referral.
Great.
Is this face-to-face?
It would be virtual.
Virtual face-to-face, or, I mean, like a Zoom?
Correct.
So no cost to the school district?
Correct. The families would be billed, the insurance of the families would be billed directly through Behavioral Health Services.
So we're providing a room and the equipment for the student to basically connect to Behavioral Health. So, I mean, there are some things that we need to do as a school to provide for this service. And outside of that, we're basically just, with minimal help, really, on the district's part, we're providing a great opportunity for our student here.
Correct, so the student would let, would miss less class time, the parent would not have to come. Those are the big barriers that I generally see when working with students and helping connect them with the counseling services in the area. The parents having to leave work, pick the child up, and then the amount of schoolwork that the students are missing during that time.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the online mental health services with Behavioral Health Clinic of Wausau for our students.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion by Terry, a second by Colette. Any further questions?
Can I assume that if a parent wants to be part of this and it happens at the school, that they'd be allowed to be, to sit in if need be?
Yes, correct.
District or name of girl?
It's driven through the parent and the child.
Sure.
Yes, absolutely, we would encourage that actually.
Yes.
And is there anything contractual between the district and Behavioral Health?
We will do a MOU. We wanted to bring it to you first, but yes, we will do a MOU that...
Okay, and the length of the contract or MOU is?
Well, it would be what we would determine it to be. I would say we would do it for probably one year.
Okay.
Reevaluate and see how it's going.
All right, okay. Any other questions? All right, we'll call to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unheard. All right, motion Terry is five zero. And thank you for all the work of bringing that to our students and parents. I think it's a great option. Next, we have review and set adult meal prices per the USDA directive.
Yeah, in your packet, you got some information. This is a requirement with the changes that were made with the prices. And it is somewhat related to the pandemic, but there's a certain minimum that has to be met. And this was the very lowest of the prices that all schools that are offering meals to adults would have to go ahead and approve. So that's why it's before you again, and that would raise the adult price to $2.56 for breakfast. And for lunch, it would be $4.65 per day.
All right. We haven't had to do that at all for, usually we do that at the beginning of the year. But being that there was no charge to our students, we weren't having to have, make a change.
We didn't have to do that.
So this is for the adults only.
And we probably wouldn't have made a change. This is being driven by USDA.
Understood, okay, very good. Someone prepared to make a motion to change the adult meal price.
I'll make a motion to increase the adult breakfast price to $2.56 and the adult lunch price to $0.46, $4.65.
Sorry, go.
Okay, motion by Stacy, second by Terry. Any further questions? Hearing none, we'll call to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unheard. Very good, motion passes five zero. Next, we have the SER 3 informational report and community feedback.
I provided in your packet information about SER 3, where the funding comes from. This is, again, through the American Rescue Plan Act. And SER stands for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund Program. If you recall, the first two rounds of money, SER 1 and SER 2, were just basically given to districts based on their Title I calculations and needs. And there was not a lot of attachments or strings attached, if you will, that went with it. It was really to keep schools open and running and safe. The third round of the federal money comes with a lot more restrictions to it, though it is still pretty flexible. And part of the requirement is making sure that your community knows what the SER 3 funds can be used for and giving them an opportunity to provide feedback as to what their thoughts are. Now, this does not mean or require that we do what our feedback is given. It can be as simple as, you know, paper and pencil survey, or, you know, random polling questions, or it can be very formal. Originally, we thought we would have to do a public hearing to gather input, but the guidance left many months ago, that left as not being the case. So this gives us a really good feel for what our community is thinking. And I've outlined some things to keep in mind. Mostly that it's important to know that 20% of this money has to be used to improve instructional practices and outcomes through evidence-based interventions, which we already do, but it allows us to increase some of that. And it's mainly to keep schools open, keep the learning environment safe, which is a broad range of anything from repurposing the needs in a building to, it can even go as far as new construction, depending how it would support your program needs. And I listed a few different items here for you to see what it could be used for. And then what we've done is I put this information together and shared it with Jen and created a survey, a brief survey that is on the website. And it's basically short answers that asks our public how they're connected to the school and then gives them an opportunity to give feedback on how the money can be spent. And then we'll take that information and report back to you what their ideas are that they share with us. We will go live with opening that.
It's live.
It's live? Okay, I asked her to have it ready for today. And so it's open now and I...
Response is already too.
Do we? Well, that's really exciting, yay. So we will keep that open for, I would say we should keep it open for at least three weeks.
Three weeks.
The month, the funding is not released yet. What also goes with this is writing it in a true grant form. So I've done some preliminary work on it to get it started. And then I will bring to you what we identify as some of the major needs that this money can be attributed to. And then you can weigh in and share what you approve of or don't approve of. But I put the big caveat on that this is one-time spending. It's not going to be wise to, for instance, my example would be hire four new reading teachers with full salary, and then this money is gone in 18 to 24 months. Then what do you do? You have to really plan within your means. And it's an opportunity to look at subject or projects possibly that we wouldn't have an opportunity otherwise to use this money towards, just as we used it towards our HVAC and airflow in the beginning. Do you have questions that I can answer on it?
So is this web connection, the survey that's on the school website, is that the only option for feedback?
It's the only one I have right now in the form of a survey. I also had it on the agenda tonight, so people could during comments refer to it.
And that will be going out like tonight. I posted to social media, but tomorrow it'll go out as an alert to all the parents. They'll have a direct explanation of what it is and a link to it through the alert system. So we'll hit a lot of people that way.
Okay.
And we were going to put it in the newsletters.
Yeah, it'll be in the newsletters on Friday as well.
All right. And then the survey will be found on the website?
Yeah, they'll get, the link will be straight in the communication they get so that they don't have, it'll take them right to that page.
Okay, so you have a hyperlink there?
Yeah.
All right, so they want to...
They don't have to go searching for it.
Yep.
And there's an additional link that takes you right to the state DPI website that has all the many links tied to the federal requirements and mandates and criteria, so you can get real deep into it as far as you would like to go. Or as briefly as you'd like to go.
Okay, all right. Very good. Okay, so this here is a report, so there's no board action required on this at all?
Correct.
Just providing this information for the community. And I guess if there is anyone here, I guess they could give us feedback tonight, so... I guess we don't have any.
Okay.
All right, but we have some off the website that, we've got a good start, so that's good. All right, so we can move on to the next one. School Forest Highway Property Update Report. And with that, I'll start off by, we did have a tour of the property, which was earlier in the agenda. And we were out there, and so all the board members came out there, Terry came out. We had Justin that we met out there and John Grossman. And Dave Kirby was out there. So it was actually a pretty pleasant night out there overall. It was a little windy, but other than that, it was good to get boots on the ground. And Justin kind of brought us up to speed a little bit as far as some of the things that he's done since our last meeting. So maybe you can just share that for everyone if you would?
Sure, the Phil from MSA Services, Engineering Services, has started to come up with some rough sketches of placement, outdoor classroom structure, porta-potty sort of spot and parking aligned with where trap range would go. So I showed the folks out at the property where, generally speaking, those items are. Where the next steps, at least for me personally, is continue to, I would like for us to be at a spot where when we get to spring, we have buildable plans, we have curricular highlights ready to go so that we can construct the trails that we've talked about in our head for us. I'd like John's idea, a little bridge over there across that gully, that'd be kind of a cool little touch of jumping off point to get to the back part of the property. But I think I may have touched on this a little bit last month, but certainly as the sketches of what Phil's putting together for us come to fruition, the good news is we can get done what we need or want to get done with the trap range without having to bulldoze into cutting a bunch of the more old growth trees. So relatively as is as far as not having to go deeper into the property where some of the bigger maples and things like that are growing. That's great news that there's enough room and space there to do that. That's about it. You know, there's a period of time here in the upcoming couple of months where the sketches will become more finite, you know, and more specific. And we have opportunity as a school to say, okay, we like this, maybe let's tweak this, ask questions. And it's a moldable, buildable thing, leading up into the spring where that's as promised from Phil, that's where we can have buildable plans ready to go, like, all right. And then we can put some of the wonderful community members who have already stepped forward and said, hey, we'll help out. And that's where we can start putting the folks to work and getting that to usable for as soon as possible for our kids. It's exciting because, and I touched on this last month too, but it's really exciting to see all the different staff members and the different ideas from a variety of departments. I mean, yeah, we all expect the science teachers to be excited about getting kids outside, but it's history, it's art, it's music, it's, there's a lot of teachers that are... And they've had some time to think about it, of course, right? But, which is good, but, so exciting stuff.
Excellent. So any idea when we're going to see more information from MSA?
I would think anytime we, anytime we want, we can get updates. In fact, we just got preliminary drawings just like literally a day ago.
Okay.
And I can bring those to the table here for sure.
Okay.
So you can take a look at what's uphill, right?
Yeah. Any other questions? Is there anything to add?
No, Justin's doing a fantastic job. What he's not telling you is the hours of time on the phone he has spent in connecting with folks and working with MSA and really starting to get a good feel of how we can make these things all find their place and fit within the property and fit well. We don't want to rush it, we want to do it with due diligence and make sure it's... It's the outcome of the project that we all are envisioning, and it's getting close.
And he's not here right now, he was out there at the property, as you all know, but the time that John Grossman has put into this is enormous. You've seen some of the work in the digital files that he's shared with us, but he's really been a valuable resource and a big help, for sure.
Yeah, I thanked and complimented John for all the work that he did as well. And to have him as a neighbor, you couldn't ask for anything better than that, right? And so, yeah, well, very good. And, you know, thank you for all the time and effort you're putting into this.
It's fun stuff.
It's going to be good, and it's going to be something that I think a lot of people are excited about. Very good. Okay, so next, we have the Fall Sports Report, but...
Yes, included in your packet was the Fall Sports Report from Charlie Volk, our A.D. So you've probably had a chance to read it. However, Charlie and Carrie had a family emergency, and he has asked that we save comments and questioning on it until next month because he really wanted to, I think, celebrate the seasons with you. And I told him that absolutely that would be fine.
Very good, so we'll see it on December agenda then?
Correct.
Very good. Next, we go to the School Safety Report.
Okay, and with our school safety reports, this is something that is required to be done and to meet our obligations also with this Office of School Safety and all through Department of Justice. So our principals have been working on this. I'm going to turn it over to, I'll start with Justin, and then you can go to Steve. And if Todd makes it, we will talk to Todd.
Okay, so as Terry indicates, we have an obligation to perform school safety drills. A good state mandate, for sure. The documents that you have there, that sort of outline what transpired for our drills here this fall, has a lot of the detail on it. That is a document that's done collaboratively between myself and Chief Scott Lee. In reality, it starts back, the story of that starts back in in-service where Scott Lee came in and gave our whole, everybody from the district staff an update on, you know, some things that have, little minor tweaks that have changed in protocols and for school safety. And largely what we're talking about here is active intruder type situations and preparedness for that. The way that works, when we engage Chief Lee, we start the drill over at Three Lakes School Building first. And the details are in there, I don't need to go too much more into it. But the basics of it is we started out with the administrative hold, which is kind of what we do if we needed to keep kids out of the hall or if we wanted students to stay in classrooms. For example, if we want to do a canine search of the building, something like that. That's what we would typically use that sort of an exercise for. But we called the drill, started with that, walked around, make sure everything is... And we put humans in the hallway really quickly to make sure that, A, we're getting the things done that we need to get done, and B, we aren't taking a ton of plastide for these sort of things. And then it transitions into an administrative lockdown. And in that phase, it's more like this is what would happen if there was a bad guy in the building, okay? Really, really impressed. I'd been a part of a number of school safety drills in a number of different districts where after the drill, when you have your debrief with the police officers, it's okay, here's, here was the red flags, here are the things we need to fix. Here in the, both the drill that we did over in Three Lakes and that we came over here and did over here in Sugar Camps, both of them checked out awesome. And the best thing that I saw that was improvement over the last time the drill was done is that 100% of occupied rooms were locked and shut down. There was no open doors, nothing left open at all where our humans were, where our kids were, where our staff members were. We found a couple of open doors where they were unoccupied. You would expect that, right? There's nobody in that classroom, teachers maybe at prep or like shared staff in a different building. That room's open, but no humans in there, that's not a problem. So we got really good reviews from the police officers, who, as they should be, are very, very particular about those sort of drills. We got the whole Three Lakes building, both phases done in less than, right around 15 minutes. Here, I think it was a grand total, it was a jack, three, three minutes?
Stretching.
Yeah, yeah, so really quick, which is awesome because the data shows that if bad things are going to happen, they happen really fast, right? And if we can get kids and staff locked, locked down and safe, that saves lives if heaven forbid there was ever an incident. So by and large, things went really well. There, I was kind of waiting for, okay, what are some suggestions we need to improve on? What do we need to work with staff on? And we're all good, we're all good. There was, and then part of that is you got a lot of experienced staff who've done this a time or two before, right? So it's nothing new. And kids are really good. I mean, sometimes you do these sort of checks and your kids giggle in or laugh and or joking around, and we didn't get any of those sort of things happening. So it was, it was really good. Thankful for the folks who are helping us to, you know, work with the school to make sure we're keeping things safe. It was, it was well, well, well done from, from our staff's perspective, so. Do you have questions specifically about what transpires or what happens or anything like that that I could help answer?
Justin, remember last, was it, I think it was last year, there were some complications with the doors just outside the IMC here. Do you remember that, Jack?
The outside door?
Yeah.
Check it.
Okay.
Yeah, actually about a month ago, and what the, what he's talking about is the design of that door, the latch on it enabled even in the locked position, Scott could come up and jar it real quick and it would pop. And I actually had a door guy come in five weeks ago, kind of looked it over, and I brought him to the front door, and like, we don't have a problem here, why do we have a problem here? I said, I don't think this latch looks right. Anyways, he ordered us a new latch that actually came in last week, and we installed it on Friday, and it made the difference, so that's all locked up now.
All right.
I should also mention that there's an evacuation drill which we do monthly with the fire drills, that, that's listed in there as a part of our state required safety drill. And it's helpful to know if there ever was a critical incident here through the cooperation of the Naida County. If we need help, like if we had to remotely evacuate to a different place and reunify, reunify our families, Rhine-Lander Schools will send some personnel here. Likewise, we will go to there if there's big time issues that need to get resolved and that adults are needed, which is a really, really cool idea. Because if, if something were to really truly happen that was awful, and, you know, you've got kids in the building, I've got kids in the building, he's got kids in the building, and all of a sudden now we're trying, it, it would get really, really, really helpful to have more adults who are trained in this sort of thing. So, and that's all, that's all Chief Lee has arranged all of that for us and our Napo Naida County Sheriff's Department folks who are near and dear to the area. But so we've got kind of a tandem cooperation going on with the folks over at Rhine-Lander, so that's a kind of cool thing to have, like a good insurance policy, hoping you never have to use it, right?
Yeah, exactly.
That's about it.
Very good.
Steve, do you want to add anything? We're good.
We're in one building, so that all covers it.
It kind of says it all, doesn't it?
All right, very good. And how does that work with the, the daycare and such that is in the building?
They're notified when we do the drill, so they're, they're under the same coding, the sheet that's in every room that says what each, each lockdown code is, they follow the same thing that we do.
Okay.
We just, we try to remember to tell them when we're doing the drills, so they're, they're there to do it right along with us.
Okay, excellent. All right, anything else on that?
And those rooms passed inspection during the, during the drill.
I'm sorry?
Those rooms did pass inspection during the drill.
Okay. Very good. Okay, thank you for the reports, and appreciate, it is an important thing, just, you know, hopefully we never have to do it for real, so. Next, onsite COVID testing report.
Yes, I'm happy to report that our onsite COVID testing is going very well. We're about three weeks in. We were fortunate to be working with accelerated labs. The two nurses slash testers are very experienced, and I think that goes a long way with making things run very smoothly. We are using Door 24, which is just past the gym auditorium area, so people can drive right up. There, there really is privacy there because it is airlocked, it's easy access in and out, it's easy for cleaning. We did, I think, a fantastic job thanks to Jen and me hashing it out, but really her brainchild of getting, these are the directions. Even first day in, we decided to alter them a little bit because we found that they could come into the airlock rather than us having to, or the nurses having to go out to the parking lot, it, it works that well. I reminded folks, and I keep reminding them, this is completely mandatory, it is an option. Parents have to consent. Some schools have, you may here have like a blanket, you know, if you think the child is sick, you can send them down for testing, that is not Three Lakes School District. We would not do that without parent consent, and parents are to be present when testing is occurring. We don't see the, we, we don't have anything to do with it. The, the testing and the results all go through the lab system, which goes through the Wisconsin Department of Health, and we receive back similar to we would from other facilities through Oneida County or Vilas County if there is a positive case. In this case, we're finding out positives and negatives. And I'm happy to say that the ladies feel it's going well. I thought maybe it was going slow because we haven't had a huge number, but, you know, we can have 10 one day and six another day and maybe a few more, but they feel it's going extremely well. And many tests have been done, and we've identified, I think it was three positives to about 30 some negatives. So to me, that tells us that we're finding out if there is truly COVID or not COVID in trying to keep our building safe. And by me saying we, it's the parents that are, or the staff, or a spouse of a staff member with that connection. People are not finding it easy to get testing, they're going as far as Antigone and Wassa and around the areas, it's just not as easy to access as one would think. So if it continues to go this way, I see us maintaining through the rest of this year while it's funded through the state, Tuesdays and Thursdays. And we do have the option if Three Lakes staff or students would want to go to Rhine-Lander, Rhine-Lander has agreed to take our families, and they likewise could come to our area. So far, that hasn't been occurring.
All right, very good. So when you say year, is it school year?
Well, I believe it's the school year based on the funding that is in their program. So they will let us know, I believe, when it's going to end.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you for that. Next, we have the Three Lakes Regional Aquatic and Fitness Center project update. Mr. Chuck Radke and David Kirby are with us tonight. So to start off, you were here almost two years to the month, it was October of 2019, and we've got some new board members since, so I'm going to ask if you would maybe give us a little more background information like you gave us a couple of years ago, as if you would, Chuck?
Sure.
And so that they can hear it and get all the information. The board thus far has given a conceptual go for the project on school property with a lot of details to be determined. And so that was something that you needed to basically start the fundraising, and so we're, we're anxious to see where you're at, so. Pleasure's.
Yeah, thank you very much for the opportunity. First of all, I'd like to mention that there have been, there has been a representative group involved in this project since the beginning. And the project's been going on for just under 10 years. Kirby's been working with the project for the whole time, he's hung in there nicely. Appreciate his expertise in ventilating and understanding water systems and so on and so forth. But about two years ago, we provided a PowerPoint that we shared with the board. And rather than to go through that whole PowerPoint, which we can do, and I've got copies of it that I can send to your district administrator.
That'd be great.
If you'd like the new board members to go through the full PowerPoint, that's possible. But rather than do that, I'll just kind of give you all an update, okay? And first of all, the, the group that we had, and it's, it's now, still right now very involved includes Dave and Linda Swanson, and Gary Williams and Sue Frank, and they've been hanging out with the project real well. We visited a number of aquatic centers in the state of Wisconsin, like Bloomer, Antigone, Brown Deer, and most recently the Potawatomi Center between Cran and Leona. It's, if you haven't seen it, it's a beautiful facility, and they have an aquatic portion to that, that's a major part of it. And they have a number of other opportunities there besides aquatic opportunities. In addition to doing that, early on in the game, we conducted a, a survey, and the survey actually had 280 participants in the survey. And the participants that were, that were in the survey represented 5,000 users for Three Lakes Regional Aquatic Center. So based on those results of that survey, and the number of users in the interest that we had, the group made a decision that it was feasible for us to continue rather than to drop the project because we felt there was significant interest. And I believe there is still that interest. And so based upon what people were interested in, what are we talking about for an aquatic center for Three Lakes, for the region? Well, we're talking, we're talking about having a competitive freshwater pool, not a chlorinated pool, a freshwater pool. It would be an eight lane competition pool. In addition to that, we're talking about having a leisure pool, which is a different temperature than a competitive pool. And the leisure pool provides opportunities like a resistance river and things like that, in areas to do aerobic activity and some land swimming. In addition to that, we're talking about a therapy pool, which is a very warm or hot water type, you know, therapy, like you're a hot tub type thing. And then finally, we're talking about a splash pad. And a splash pad is a pad with different types of sprinklers and things for typically younger children, very, very shallow water, almost a deck setup. So we're talking about those main areas. And the most recent one that's come to my attention, and we haven't really considered, but has been brought to my attention, has, had, had to do with a dog therapy pool, bleeder not. I'm not suggesting that dogs are swimming in the water, but there are some places that do have dog therapy available, and so that's kind of interesting. So at any rate, those were the different types of pools that we had talked about. We had also initially talked about having a healthcare provider within the facility, and Marshfield Clinic had agreed to be that healthcare provider. And since the last time we met, they've had to drop out for a number of reasons. And so right now, we don't have a healthcare provider, but that does provide openings for other types of healthcare providers or therapies to fill in, or could be daycare centers or all types of things. So at any rate, also since our last meeting with the board, the board had designated, had some questions, or the, that the facility we looked at by Phil Kreisel, an engineer representing the board. And the questions that Phil had, had to do with parking, had to do with drainage, had to do with snow removal, and had to do with building access. And I think I assured with Phil and with the district administrator, with Terry, the answers that we came up with to the questions that he had, and I think, I believe that Phil was comfortable with the answers to all the questions that he had regarding the facility. So I don't think that there are any issues, at least from Phil, regarding the facility. Now, originally, the facility was going to be attached to the school, and it was changed to be detached from the school on the southwest portion of the parking lot area, at, at the school site. And the building of this particular aquatic center would include additional parking spaces that fit within the blueprint. And Dave and I, and I believe Phil had been out there and, you know, you know, kind of based everything off and looked at the area, and there was room for everything. We're at the point right now, and we're hopeful that the school board is still supportive of this issue, because we're ready to, to start to try and secure pledges for funding, which is typically the next step. And then we'll work out some of the finer points as we go, and we could start that as early as tomorrow. And in terms of working through foundations and grants for a project like this. In talking with the architect, we had worked with a gentleman by the name of Randy Newman out of Beaver Dam, and also working with Water Technology Incorporated out of Beaver Dam, and they are both well respected in the aquatic industry for their expertise all over the country and, and in some cases, all over the world. And we're also taking a look at some project managers that have worked in the Three Lakes area with the new library and municipal buildings, and also worked with the Potawatomi, an agency called Greenfire. And there are other options besides Greenfire that may be of assistance in this project. But we're hopeful that we've been able to, you know, kind of answer your questions, that we can move ahead with contacting foundations, and that's typically the process. And things really don't go public in terms of asking people for donations until about 70% of the funding is taken care of by the major contributors, and that's pretty typical for big projects. And your question might be, well, how much are we talking about here? And we're talking about somewhere in the neighborhood of 24 million. That's a big number. Is it possible? Yes. Have others done it? Yes. Whereas the most recent facility like this, that's, in Milwaukee area, there was one, that went up. The Potawatomi situation's a lot different than what we're looking at, but that particular project was in the area of 80 million, excuse me, 60 million, 60 million, sorry. So at any rate, I think that's sort of a quick update, it lets you know what we're looking at, about how much money we're talking. I didn't mention and meant to mention that this is not, we're not looking for taxpayer dollars, we're not looking for any funding from the school district, we're looking at this particular facility, we stand alone. There's another aquatic center in Bloomer that's operated this way, they built their aquatic center, and they've been in the black for about the last 16 years, very successful. And we went, and we went there and we looked at that initially early on in our project, and that's what gave us some, some hope for this particular facility. And that's what gave us some hope for this particular facility. Is there a need? I think so. Would it be helpful to our district and children? I know so. And I've been involved in aquatic experiences for most of my life. And I've been involved in some situations here in the Three Lakes area where a child was airlifted due to a near drowning and other situations where there have been drownings that might have been able to have been prevented if people had known how to operate in those types of situations or had some experience. We're looking at a state-of-the-art facility. When I say freshwater, that's a lot different than a chlorinated pool. Is it what they've done at the Potawatomi? No, there's this chlorinated. And they're just moving from chlorine gas right now to chlorine pellets. So they're already making some adjustments. What we're talking about is when you go into this facility, you don't smell the chlorine. You can actually go up to the water and take a glass and drink the water right out of the pool. When we were in Beaver Dam with Water Technology Incorporated, that's how clean we're talking. So it's, and there aren't many eight-lane pools. And that would be the best way to attract meets and such. Could we get by with a smaller pool? Yes. Could we downsize this? Yes. Do we want to downsize this? No. But we could. So it kind of depends upon where it goes from here. And we're at an exciting point where we've had, some of our committee members now have been, attended a course this summer on writing grants and working foundations that took place, this particular course was in the Three Lakes area. And we've got the right people in the right place at the right time. Now, we're just coming off of COVID. And I'm thankful that we weren't in the middle of a building project because there's a few things that we would do differently now that we wouldn't have done two years ago, in terms of outside access. How many doors are there? What about the ventilating system? We can build something that's, I think, best. So what questions do you have?
What kind of timeline do you have for contacting the different places that you're hoping to get the seventy percent of the funding?
I would, I project that probably within about eight or nine months, we could have, we would know where we are with that process. And actually, in terms of even when companies would be able to work on a project like this, we're looking at a year, two, year and a half out, you know, that would be, if everything fell into place, that's as fast as we could move things. That's if everything were to fall into place. Now, let's say the funding would come through on a smaller level. Could we make some changes? Yes. Could we do things in phases? Yes. But that's not our first choice.
Are you looking to attract another healthcare provider that might team with you?
We're open to that. And we've got several contacts that we can make. We initially contacted more than just Marshfield Clinic. We had worked with them, provided the opportunity to a number. We can return to some of them and try some others that have surfaced. But I think there are a few things, according to what the architect Randy Newman has told me, that's really coming forward a lot more in terms of water therapy for physical therapy and occupational therapy type, well, physical therapy type things. That's not real available up here. And we could offer that, which would be, could be very attractive to a place like Health in Motion, Yolz, Fine Sport. And I have been in contact with him, and let me think about it. I understand that, that's okay. We've got time, and that's a good thing.
Would there be any connection to, let's say, an organization like the YMCA?
Could be. Let me give you an example of, there could be an affiliation with the YMCA. There could be an affiliation with the Boys and Girls Club, which is kind of interesting because the Michael Phelps Foundation works very closely with the Boys and Girls Clubs of America. So there are foundations like that that sometimes can contribute. Also, we would work, everything would be set up for people with any type of handicap. And we have a person that's been working with our committee that has been very instrumental in working through problems like this. So we've got that representation pretty well covered on our committee. His name is Anthony Regold.
Forwarding ahead to when the building's built, how do you see the curriculum adding something from the aquatic center, like swimming classes? Have we talked about it? Have we thought about that?
Are you asking me or you have?
Just the group in general.
Typically, most districts that have access to aquatic facilities try and take advantage and try and teach their children as soon as possible the basics. And I'm not saying that we're ready to have an Olympic swim team by any means. But I do think that whatever we can do to help children and families understand water safety, it's critical. And it cannot be done as well in a lake situation as it can be in a pool situation, I know that from experience. And I think it would behoove us, being the largest Finland chain of lakes in the world, to have this action available. And right now, I think our town could use a shot in the arm. This could help our town.
So there, if we had access to a pool, it would almost be a certain and instant add to our required FIAE curriculum for sure. Water safety course and basic stroke work, the American Red Cross, the curriculum for water safety instruction, that'd be easy. And now, Mr. Regold and Mr. Stevis might have to dust off their old WSI certifications. Because I can guarantee they have them, they come from school. But obviously, they haven't used them in a while, so they probably have to be refreshed in those areas. But it's not a hard process to implement those. It would be, it would be a unit of our FIAE courses for sure, right off the bat.
Steve, you remember for many years, we were privately funded for fifth and sixth graders, was it?
Third grade typically, and we still, up to COVID, we still had been doing that. We have the funds, I've been working with the Y, they don't have instructors right now. But we typically do run our third grade, and then, yes, our, I think it was fourth. Fourth grade also did a safety unit up there. Third grade was swim lessons, the fourth grade is the safety spot that you're asking about or that we're referring to.
That was privately funded by a community member?
It was before, and now it's, the last few years it's been graduating classes has, have left money behind for our curators to do the swim lessons because they saw a real value in that.
So the interest and the value, we understand that. But to do that, we had to go all the way up to the Y up in Rylander.
Yeah, so we have a boss cost and cost of instruction and all that kind of stuff too. So it's, it'd be much nicer to have it locally.
Across the parking lot?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I'm hopeful that the board would be supportive of our attempts to secure funding so we can, you know, try and move ahead because we're at that sort of point now. Where we can start to look at that. I'm not suggesting that you're saying that you're taking up a project, but just that you'd support our efforts. And we can keep you abreast of the situation all the way through the process.
I guess I have a question. This, to me, this seems more like a, I mean, it would be a great add to the community. It seems more like a community facility. Have you thought to going and, have you brought this up to the town at all, rather than the school district?
I haven't gone before the town board with this because it seemed most appropriate to work through the school district. Could we? Yes. I think, though, that we're looking at something that would be very available to the school district and most convenient to the school district. And it's sort of similar to the exercise weight room areas that you're offering right now for our community that have been, I think, well-received by many. And, but, yeah, no, I have not approached that, you know, with those boards. I have worked with the park commission, for example, on other projects, and I have familiarity with most of the people there through pickleball type stuff, so.
To your point, Josh, there are, you mentioned Blumer. Doesn't Antigo have a, that the school there?
Yeah, we were down in Antigo.
Yeah, there are a number of districts in the state that have the aquatic center right on the district property. There are definitely advantages of having it so close. And not to say that it couldn't be at the park in Three Lakes. If they were willing to do that, I guess that would be another question. So, but at this point, what we've done with the board is we've given them conceptual approval to at least start and look at fundraising and such like that. Now, we've got a number of new board members since we were here two years ago.
Sure.
We've got three new board members. And so three of you are probably hearing this for the first time.
I was, I was here for that.
Were you?
I was.
Okay, all right.
I've heard it in other venues.
I was at a couple of the meetings where this was discussed too.
Okay, oh, excellent.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, so you've heard it then, and, yeah, could it be brought in front of the board again for another discussion, another decision? If there was interest in doing so, that could be done. And so, you know, Chuck has come forward here with a report on where you're at today and also a little bit of history. So does anybody have any interest, I guess, in revisiting the past decision? And if so, consider putting that on the agenda again.
I would say I would.
Okay, so you would have interest in reviewing that decision?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Any others?
I would like to know the thought behind this too, just to, how we're working together.
Is that something you get information from Chuck now, or?
Yeah, I can talk to him off the top too.
Okay, all right. Okay. Do you have other questions that you would like to discuss with Chuck to get more information, Josh?
I think the information is, is fine. It's the decision and the discussion among the board that I would like to revisit, I guess.
Okay, all right. So at this point, it's not an agenda for any decision. It was basically a report. And so I will, I guess, just have to have a conversation with, I guess, yourself. And if anybody else is interested in revisiting this, we can basically talk about it and revisit the decision if that's the direction we need to go, so. Okay. Any other questions for Chuck, as long as he's here, Chuck?
I have a question, just, is it a problem, you think, if, for example, tomorrow, if I'm here with our group and we start to pursue pledges and funding, or?
Is it a problem? You know, in all fairness, I guess, we have two new members here, is that correct? So Stacy, you were on the board when we made that decision? Okay, all right.
Now, let me just explain what that means.
Yeah, why don't you explain that?
What that means is that we would be asking, sharing with foundations. This is our plan, and asking for pledges. Not, don't give us some money right now, and this is what they did in Blumer. And then, as all the pieces come together, then we confirm those pledges and then move ahead with the project.
And that's what you said would take the seven to eight months to get all that out there?
Well, yeah, no, if it moves more quickly, once we get to about seventy percent or so, then things can move much more quickly, and then we can actually start collecting the funds. Now, we don't want to be in a situation where we're taking money in and all of a sudden, this doesn't happen. This is how you avoid that type of problem, when you take pledges. Now, other people will say, well, how can you be certain that those pledges will come through? And this is what they did in Blumer. And ninety-eight percent, ninety-eight percent of their pledges came through as they had pledged. And that I can deal with. If we're fifty-fifty, I wouldn't feel comfortable. But that's based on what they told me, and they've been in the black for a long time. So, but I, I, I think that right now, the timing with the COVID thing and everything, and everybody, you know, some of these foundations are just coming off things right now. And I understand some of the numbers are going up again. But I think there's a light at the end of the tunnel. And I, I think it's a good time if we can move to try with, for pledges. Does that make sense?
I totally understand what you're saying there. And then I guess, in all fairness to our board members here, I think it would be also fair to give them the opportunity to speak that we're part of that decision that we had a couple of years ago. So I think it might be a good thing just to put on next month's agenda. And then, we're going to ask you to come back, Chuck. And I guess in the meantime, if there are questions that you would have, Josh, you could speak with Chuck. And then we'll just make sure that the board is still with this project. And so I don't think we have any reason to believe that things are automatically going south at this point. But I think it's more of a fairness thing, is what I'm saying.
I understand. And can we deal with that? Sure. And we'll think in terms of if everything goes right, you know, so we can prepare and be ready to rock and roll when the time is right. Next month, I know I'm going to be out of town a good portion of the month. However, I hope it might be possible for either another representative or for me to participate virtually in some way if you would like another or more information. Is that sound okay?
Is that doable?
Look at Steve for that one.
Well, it could be.
Yeah, it's doable.
You know, it could be a conference call. We have to see each other, not necessarily. But I'm just, what I'm saying is that I'm pretty sure I'm not going to be able to be here.
Yep.
And I don't wanna speak for the other members, uh, because they have some pretty crazy schedules too.
Yep.
But I just, I just wanna tell you, had time, and we'll do whatever we can to, um, represent and get the answers that, that you want.
Okay, perfect.
Good.
Very good, thank you for the report and update. Alright, so next we have Jay, future trips to the Washington DC report.
Uh, I wanted to bring this back to you, just to touch base really. Our main focus is getting our current postponed trip to take place. That's where our focus is. But there has been questions about where the, um, the trip to Washington DC goes in the future. Again, related to fundraising, that's where it's come, uh, to light that there are some staff members who have been concerned about, well, if we're going to do this, we need to get going with this. Are we doing it? Is it feasible now in the, the pandemic world that we live in? Or is it any longer best placed at the eighth grade level? When Donna Welhofer retired, along with, and I'm going to forget her name, Laura, when?
Whipperman?
Whipperman. They were the original, um, drivers of this, and that was over twenty years ago. And wonderful trip, uh, no, everybody raves about the trip that they've had. But times have changed and you need to have the, the workforce to make it happen. And it is an incredible amount of work. So I asked Justin to take this on with the staff, knowing that he leads the seven twelve. And first of all, find out if there's interest among other staff members who might wanna lead this or what some other opportunities would be. Because, um, to be very honest, I thought that maybe this had run its course, that it was just not going to be something that was done, at least in the same capacity of a curriculum-driven, all students participate by grade level. And maybe it would look more like a club or some of our other trips that are taken. So Justin, if you wanna hop in there and share what you've found?
Sure, uh, basically what I found is that, yes, there is staff interest. And yes, that interest lies in the high school staff. Very, uh, very quick, uh, response from a staff member or two who, lots of questions. What does this all entail? What, what does this mean? But, you know, um, can it be for students who are tenth, eleventh grade-ish area? You know, although, all those questions were, were of course, um, asked. But yeah, we have, we have some folks that, that are willing to, uh, keep it going. But we did not have any folks who are willing to say, yeah, I wanna do this at the junior high level where it currently was at with the, we're all used to the eighth graders, you know, right? Had some interest though from the high school, for sure, to, 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 yeah, there's significance for what we can get kids, uh, i- i- to see and experience in DC that plays right into the, the curriculums in, in my class, in our class, in our, in our classes. So, um, yes, I'm not gonna mention any names because nobody wants to commit to it until they have a clear picture of what it all means. Because we, you know, we're, we're still trying to get our kids, you know, our sophomores now on their eighth grade trip, right?
Yep.
But there was staff interest in, in, in a nutshell.
Okay, well, very good. So could be something that we see on a continual basis, uh, should things progress in that direction. Any other questions, board members? Good? Alright, okay, thank you for that, and we're on to the personnel report.
Okay, we have several hirings to report. Brian DiOrio, boys basketball head coach. Marcus Leepsher, boys basketball assistant coach. Brad Volkman, boys basketball program assistant. Jack Wales, junior high boys basketball coach. Lauren Swinski, girls basketball program assistant. Rich Javonkowski, girls junior high A-team basketball coach. Uh, Casey Crump, girls junior high, um, B-team basketball coach. David Ditzler, National Honor Society advisor. Jen Meyer, drama advisor. Jennifer Crom, assistant drama coach. Amaris Grappa, yearbook, yearbook co-advisor. And Bethany Puffer, uh, yearbook co-advisor.
Alright, okay, thank you for that, and district-related positive happenings?
Let's start, I guess.
Alright.
So two quick ones, um, we did have the regional technology coordinators group that met yesterday in Three Lakes and returned Fab Lab, Mr. Coach did a great job, highlighting what we do here. Um, there were a couple of people in that group looking to add Fab Labs and there were a couple that had them that were just kind of comparing. We are moving our, our meetings instead of going to CISO this year to kind of highlight different school districts. So we got volunteered first and that went really well. Um, hopefully, no one will try to steal Mr. Coach away from us after his presentation. So that was really good. And then our, our sixth grade classes, both of them are running, or the teachers are working with this Wisconsin Business World essay contest that's going on. There's three five hundred dollar cash prizes. Um, they're supposed to write an essay describing, uh, unique products that are made in Wisconsin. Um, and as part of that this week, the classes had in, uh, some representatives from MAPS, the lure company out of Anago. Um, kids got to make a couple lures and learn about that business. And also, most recently, they had a rep from Kona Cranes out of Manitowoc. It's a Finnish company, but they're, they have a, a production facility in Manitowoc. They do some really, recently have done some really big projects for the Navy. So a lot of talk about, um, moving nuclear material and stuff like that that was really kind of out of the mainstream that the kids really got a kick out of. So both of those were great and, uh, today, Mrs. Colado said that the kids are really into the research and finding out about those products. So hopefully we get some great essays out of that and.
Yeah.
Maybe some competitive awards.
So a couple of things, uh, in the last week or so that, that stick out in my mind as positive happenings. Uh, number one, if you got a chance to see Snow White, our drama club did an excellent job. Really, uh, i- i- it's neat to see. I mean, y- y- you see the kids there practicing every night, late hours, and, um, they really put on a nice show. That was just this past weekend, um, and, and they dealt with a reschedule. So, so very flexible and, and put on a great show even with the, the, you know, kids that were missing for a while there. Um, also, Veterans Day, I think, uh, wa- was a pretty cool event for the community and for the school. The, uh, the auditorium was pretty much standing remotely, uh, at, at Three Lakes. And, um, after the ceremony was over, Bruce Marcus came and asked me, um, you know, typical Bruce fashion, you know, well, some people would say that patriotism is passe. What would you say to that? I said, well, somebody that would say that wasn't in this auditorium. Cause it was so cool to see the kindergarteners, um, singing their songs and, um, student speakers and the, the, it's, it was a good mix of, of school and communities celebrating our, our veterans, um, and their, obviously their sacrifice that they give of their country. So, uh, really cool thing, and Jenny did a really nice job of putting it out there in terms of pictures and things like that, so much appreciated. But it was, it was a really cool event. And thanks to the American Legion, cause they, they, it's gonna give them a space to roll and they, they, they planned it all, so it's really cool.
Very good.
I guess I'll add on to the Veterans Day. Mr. Schreiber did a nice job as well as Mrs. Puffer organizing, um, Garrett Banley, who played taps at.
Yeah.
Eighth grade, I believe.
Seventh grade, he was a seventh grader.
He did a really nice job.
Yes.
And then also this Friday, we have our grandparents' day celebration, so.
Alright, anybody else?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna go tap on the Veterans Day thing too, cause it was, I was able to attend here in sugar camp and I get goosebumps just thinking about it, cause it was just so wonderful to see us back here in the gym and the kids, it's just so amazing. And then for me to be a parent and hear then my boys coming home and talking about the impactful, like, oh, Trevin's speech and Mari's speech, and I mean, it was just, it was, I mean, it was a hot topic in our house and it was really cool to see that whole gamut, so way to go. It was awesome, very proud moment.
Mr. Bach picked the speakers, he did a really nice job.
Alright, very good, and we're getting close to your correspondence, Terry?
I've got a couple of things. Um, you received a letter from John Ashley, our president of WASB, explaining the, um, stance that our local organization has taken in regards to the National School Board Association letter that was sent to the Department of Justice and, um, the dissatisfaction that the state organization has felt with how things transpired. And I just printed off a, a simple, what does it mean? There's a question and answer, um, guide. And I just wanted to let you know that it's a statement that says on November fifth, twenty twenty-one, that the WASB Board of Directors voted to withdraw participation in NSBA programs and services. What does this mean? It means that we will no longer participate in any NSBA programs nor engage with the NB, NSBA on any of its services. And I just wanna say, speaking on behalf of, um, our local organization, and Terry, you can chime in if you want to add, we are very fortunate to have such a good leader in John Ashley. And he truly sought the, um, the opinions, the feelings, the reactions of the state, the regional board of directors, and how the district board members and communities were feeling about this situation. And I believe he acted, um, cautiously but appropriately without a knee-jerk reaction. He took into consideration the best interest of the members of the state.
Yeah, it'll be ultimately up to renewal at the delegate assembly in the, uh, program down Milwaukee in January. And, um, it'll be put up to a vote there. WASB is a member-driven organization and so the members will have a chance to drive it. And they will say, we're done, or no, we'd like you to go try to fix it back up again, or, you know, whatever, whatever they come with. There will be a resolution which will be on the floor, brought by the Board of Directors of WASB. And that'll be on the floor and that'll be discussed. I'm sure it'll be a very vigorous discussion.
Yeah. Very good.
In addition, the Wisconsin School State Report Cards were released yesterday. This is just correspondence. I will bring forward to you next month a full report with our principal administrative input. Um, just wanted to let you know that Three Lakes continues to do well and excel. We exceeded expectations, um, as a district and we either met or exceeded expectations in all four of our schools.
Alright, very good. Stay tuned, huh?
Stay tuned.
On December's agenda then?
Yes.
Excellent. Alright, well, we get to go on another tour again, and everyone is welcome to join us. And, uh, so we'll tour the, the school here and, uh, if we're brave enough, we'll go outside, right? If we can see anything. And, uh, and then we'll come back here and adjourn. So, uh, for those that will be departing, thank you for joining us and, uh, come back and see us.